This meeting comes to order April sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Have a seat. We'll now have roll call.
Anthony Lipsansky.
Here.
Kenneth Hall.
Present.
Sandra Sayak is absent. Bonnie Almond.
Here.
Trevor Stone.
Here.
Ronald Glassick.
Here.
Judith Haldeman.
Here.
Riley Tillitson.
Here.
Julia Kutzler.
Here.
Anthony Prestash, the mayor.
Present. Move me there.
Now have hearing of persons present. May step to the microphone. Have any comments?
Hi, my name's Kelly France. I'm from the Northampton area food bank.
Would you mind pointing the microphone down?
Okay.
Thank you.
There? Okay.
There. Thank you very much. Oh, just because we have online viewers, so we want to.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I just want the council to know that I'm getting a grant for three hundred thousand from Northampton County. Guy's name is Frank Brooks. They've been there with the architect already. They want to put a walk-in free- additional walk-in freezer. They're going to put new lighting in, commercial refrigerators, and more heavy-duty shelving, so we don't have shelves bending food on.
Question?
Yes.
Is the grant that we can match it, or is there any kind of stipulation? Are you getting a three hundred thousand dollar grant with no strings attached?
No strings attached. They get all. They get all the workers. They do all the permits. They do it. I just have to come and unlock the booting.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
That's fantastic.
That's fantastic.
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
Good job.
Kelly, this is part of the initiative to bring the food bank up to this corner of the county.
Right.
So this would be like a hub with the county.
Yes, yes.
So I know the northwestern part of Northampton County is severely underserved by food banks.
Right.
So this will be a real feather in our hat that we have the central location and that the food bank is promoting this and pushing forward with it. So congratulations again and
Thank you.
look forward to seeing the progress.
Yes.
So congratulations.
Should be starting soon. I'm meeting with Lutron on the nineteenth of April. They're coming in. And I'm sure we're going to have to be closed for a couple of weeks.
Sure.
Where will it put it?
I'm sure you'll work it out.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Kelly, I have a quick question. Um, will you be using all of that money, do you think? I'm just asking because the garden, you know, who services the food bank, we may be looking for some additional.
Okay, I could talk to Frank.
Yeah, see if we.
I mean, he's willing to help do anything, so.
All right, thank you.
I can talk to him. He'll be around on the nineteenth of April.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. France.
Thanks. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Moving on. Next, we'll consider the request of the Central Assembly of God.
We have received a request from the Central Assembly of God located in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania for the use of both municipal park pavilions A and B on Sunday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. They would also like to use the permanent band shelf. This group has used the park several times in the past and there have never been any problems.
What is the opinion of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Stone?
Second.
Second by Mr. Glassick. Questions?
Question. With the size of the group and the location of it, would there be needs for additional bathroom services?
No, I think we're rigged pretty good.
Are y'all positive?
Yes.
Pooh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? The ayes have it. We consider request of the La Puebla Windsor Fish and Game Association.
We have received a request from the La Puebla Windsor Fish and Game Association to use the portable band trailer on Saturday, June tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. They will be required to pay a delivery and removal fee and will be required to provide a certificate of insurance naming the borough as additionally insured. And they did not ask for the use of the portable toilet.
Thank you. What is the opinion of this council?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hall?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lipsansky. Question? No questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Next, we consider the request of the Diamond Volunteer Fire Company of Walnut Port.
We have received a request from the Diamond Volunteer Fire Company of Walnut Port to use our portable band trailer beginning on Friday, June thirtieth through Sunday, July second, two thousand and twenty-three. They will be required to pay a delivery and removal fee and have already provided a certificate of insurance naming the borough of Northampton as additionally insured. Once again, they did not request the use of the portable toilet.
Motion to approve this request.
Motion made by Ms. Almond. Second?
Second.
By Mr. Stone? Question?
When is our community day? It's the week after that, right?
Uh, that begins on the nineteenth of July.
Oh, the nineteenth, right. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, consider the request of the Northampton Fire Department.
Uh, we've received a request from the Northampton Fire Department to conduct a fourth annual firefighters parade on Saturday, July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. The parade would begin at approximately five thirty and would be held in conjunction with the Community Day's fair.
What is the opinion of the council?
Motion to accept.
By Mr. Glassick?
Second.
Mr. Lipsansky? Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider appointment of the PSAB delegate and alternate delegate.
Uh, every year council appoints a delegate and an alternate delegate to the PSAB conference scheduled from June fourth through June seventh, two thousand and twenty-three in Hershey, PA. The delegate has the authority to vote on matters of importance and the alternate delegate would serve in the absence of the delegate. Historically, the mayor has served in this capacity and Mr. Prestash will attend this year's event. Uh, we originally had three council members who would also attend. They are Bonnie Almond, Judy Haldeman, and Sandy Sayak. Sandy Sayak will not be available. The delegate and alternate delegate would have to be chosen from the three members.
So what is the opinion of the council?
Are we selecting the alternate?
Yes. Now you have to select both.
I would pick the delegate first.
Oh, the delegate?
Yeah, in separate motions.
Oh, it can't be the same motion, okay. So what is the opinion for the delegate?
Nominate the mayor? I nominate her.
What?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the, Ms. Haldeman? And Mr. Lipsansky? Question?
No. No. It was either. It was Mr. Glassick.
He was Ron Glassick.
Oh, it was Mr. Glassick, okay. Sorry.
No worries.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, council.
Well, you're good. I watched you in action. You're good.
Do you want to do the alternate right away?
Yes.
Make a motion for Bonnie. Did you want that alternate?
Second.
I'm giving her a chance to say, no, I don't want it. So I thought she was third.
It's already been passed.
There you go.
Wow.
Thank you.
Sealed in concrete. Need a vote.
Okay, we have the motion. Mr. Glassick nominated Ms. Almond with a second by. Kenny Hall. Mr. Hall, question? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Almond, it's me and you and Mr. Prestash.
I will notify, uh, PSAB.
Thank you.
Next, we consider the zoning officer candidate.
With the accepted retirement of zoning officer Julian Elman, the position was advertised in all departments for any interested parties. We have received only one application, that from Jerry Sorensis. I believe he would make an excellent candidate. Uh, at this time, I would suggest that council appoint a committee to meet with him, to listen to what he has to say, and for him to ask any questions that might be on his mind.
Okay, so you want me to appoint that committee now?
That would be a good, a good step, yes.
Well, I personally want to be on the committee.
Well, as president, ex officio, you're on all committees.
Okay. So who would like to be on the committee? It would be held daytime? Working hours?
Whatever is convenient.
Well.
Aye.
Mr. Lipsansky?
I'll be on it.
I'll be on it.
Two more you need?
Pardon?
You need two more? Uncle wanted two.
Councilman Haldeman. Or you want some woman Haldeman?
You say two more, additional to Mr. Lipsansky?
Uh, two more.
Okay. What, Judy, are you going on?
If I may, nobody else. There's no other objection. I don't.
Did you? Okay, Haldeman?
And then I will. It's just tough during the day sometimes, so as long as we're willing to make adjustments, we'll be glad to.
What adjustments would you need, Mr. Glassick?
I need advance notice instead of, you know.
A schedule. It's already the work during the day.
Okay. Get out.
I'm just saying, some of us are not retired. I'm just.
Now that just gets in the way.
I'll just put it out there.
I'm retired. I woke up today and I was retired from yesterday.
Okay, so Mr. Haldeman, Ms. Glassick. Mr. Glassick, there's your committee. Okay.
Thank you for stepping up, Jared.
I will make arrangements and, and send out some suggested dates and times and we can get to.
That's just a form.
Get together.
When is? The move, Jared.
Julie's last day? June fifteenth. If this would meet with everyone's liking, we can get this on the April twentieth agenda. That'll still give us about six or seven weeks that we could, he could train and learn what he would need to know as long as everyone is amenable.
Well, I can't do a Monday or Tuesday, so that. Okay.
She works, she works on Mondays and Tuesdays.
I do. I truly do work on Monday and Tuesday.
Gets in the way, doesn't it?
It gets in the way. Reports from committees. We'll start with administration and finance.
Thank, thank you.
Ed Penny reports that on Thursday, March twenty-third, Stuart Winter and his staff from Keystone cement toward the museum. Northampton School District has scheduled tours during the month of May. During the month of June, thirty-five administrators and staff from the school district will tour the museum also. Mr. Penny also reports receiving a two thousand dollar, I'm guessing, donation or check from a buzzy Unicam USA. And we received a check from Northampton County in the amount of eleven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. This is the payout for the twenty-one, twenty-two hotel tax grant. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Building, land, and recreation. Look to, I lost my list of committees, so it's Trevor or you? Go ahead, Ms.
Um, work continues at the swimming pool. The committee is working on restructuring the rules and regulations and may suggest pool price increases for season passes. The Easter egg hunt was a huge success, delayed one day due to inclement weather. The Easter bunny was well received by all. I think it made some nice pictures in the Northampton press I saw today. Thank you to the fire department, I'm going to add in there, for stepping up and helping hand out all the candy to the, to the kids who showed. Swimming pool passes will go on sale at the rec center on Monday, May first. Season passes will be purchased only at the recreation center. End of report.
Thank you. Code and police, we look to Mr. Stone.
Yes, thank you. The planning commission will meet on Wednesday, April twelfth, to consider a sketch plan to review of David and William Lawyer to possibly develop four individual properties into one property in twenty-four hundred block of Dewey Avenue. It is their intention to build thirty-five to forty self-storage units. Uh, the police sponsor's fishing contest took place on Saturday, April second, behind the town hall in Okadok River Creek.
No, it's a mistype. It's a twenty-second.
Twenty-second, there you go. It will be on the twenty-second. All right, thank you. Uh, according to the most recent code enforcement concerns report, rental registrations are currently at eighty-five point six percent compliance.
Really good.
Yeah. End of report.
Thank you. Fire and health, we look to Mrs., Mrs. Almond.
We would like to extend a big thank you to the members of the fire department and the fire police who were pressed into the service at the Easter egg hunt. They were most helpful in handing out the chocolate prizes to the young participants. And I was there and it was a huge success, so thank you very much. The February fire police report is enclosed in tonight's packet. End of report.
Could you read that report, please? The fire and police.
The fire calls, there were sixty, there were twenty number of calls, sixty-two responders, two special events, seven responders, three meetings, seventeen responders, and training, five numbers, and twenty-four responders. For a total of about thirty-five.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public Works and Sewer, we look to Mr. Glassick.
Thank you. We received a notification from Allen Township that the Howartown Road Bridge north of Route three twenty-nine in Allen Township will be one lane of traffic beginning on May first through October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The northbound traffic will be allowed, southbound traffic will be detoured. UGI is in the process of restructuring and repaving or repairing Tenth Street, Eleventh Street, and Twelfth Street. The Canal Street Pavilion roof that was damaged during a storm last year has been repaired. End of report.
Thank you. Moving on to reports from council members. Start with Mr. Hall.
Uh, I really have no report, just to wish everybody a happy Easter.
Well, thank you.
No report.
Mr. Stone?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, with the possibility of suggesting to increase the, uh, season passes, uh, this year, I'd like to see us to start enforcing the illegal entry into the pool pass, uh, into the pool area without passes. I mean, I think we enforce that a little better, we probably wouldn't have to put the burden on the people that are actually paying for the season passes, or even increase the, the daily passes or something like that. I think that might be a, a better direction to go. Um, UGI, doing a lot of work on Eleventh, Twelfth Streets for sure. Um, I don't know if you've navigated through the area. Uh, sometimes you get right up to an intersection and realize that that road is closed and you have to turn around and go back and there's no detour. So hopefully, uh, they do a better job when they get to the Tenth Street. Uh, I want to thank Keith Williams and Boosie Unicham for the two thousand dollar donation to the Atlas Museum. Uh, and I want to commend you on, on the year going for the Northampton Food Bank as well. So that's it. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Ms. Haldeman?
I, congratulations, Kelly. That's really awesome. I, I think that's just fantastic. You've been doing such a good job down there for so many years. Following in your mom's footsteps. Big, big shoes to fill, but you did a good job. Um, I, I, uh, I don't want to speak out of term when no decisions have been made about the pool, but you, you have been absent at the last meeting and we kicked around a couple of ideas. Um, and certainly we will take in, um, your, your, your comments here and, and I think we'll have a, continue to have some discussion about the pool before we make a final decision and bring it to council. I think Leroy said by next month, correct Leroy? May, we have to have kind of our pool plan in place to present, right?
Uh, we're, we're getting there.
Yeah, I, I, there's, but can, can I at least say though, one thing is they are working on, um, Mr. Sorensis, we, we don't want to lose you to this wonderful work that you're doing, but we, there's going to be some restructuring of the fencing and things and some entrances. So I, I think that might make people a lot more help happy. But I think one of the tough things that I'm going to speak to is we're hiring very young staff and it's, it's hard for that age range to kind of confront, enforce, um, an adult coming in who may not be, you know, forthcoming about living in, uh, you know, outside of the borough boundaries and having to pay, uh, you know, a rate. You don't, you don't get questioned or the ages of the kids. And so, uh, you know, certainly we would like to believe that everyone is going to be forthcoming and, and pretty much follow the rules, but unfortunately that doesn't always happen. Um, so we will, you know, again, any suggestions anyone has, uh, moving forward, but I, I think that, um, we are really working hard at making some hopefully positive changes up at the pool in terms of some of the concerns that were expressed. And again, Andrew Lob, again, needs to be commended for the amount of wonderful suggestions he made based on his years, one-year experience up there overseeing the pool. So thank you for that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Good job. I'm ready for the pool.
Yeah.
Good, good. And thank you. Mayor Prestash?
Thank you. Uh, to council, uh, happy Easter to my Ukrainian compadre, comrade, to Stosvostrest and to all our citizens in cyberspace. Happy Easter to you too. Spent some time at Canal Park today and, uh, the weather is getting infectious. Spent some time down there with our public work supervisor, Greg Mori, looking at some areas we need to touch up a little bit. Uh, looking at the butterfly garden areas, uh, what we can do size-wise. Uh, we've had discussions with Leroy about that. And, uh, we have plenty of daffodils and tulips down there, so please, it's a great place to start your summer biking and walking and, uh, enjoy all the parks we have in town. Uh, this upcoming week, uh, our fire department will be spending time in a moth spill on the Lehigh River, compliments of Buckeye Pipeline. There'll be over a hundred people here from Buckeye as a training along with our fire department, uh, Lehigh Township and, uh, anyone else Buckeye brings into that. So it's going to be live, uh, spill remediation, booms across the river, training, lunch. It's a two-day event. It's, again, over a hundred people will be here to learn, uh, be taught, to teach, and to include our local resources here should there ever be a spill that especially would affect our water supply up, uh, in Whitehall Township. Uh, the Easter egg hunt, just another great community outreach to our citizens that brought out the best in Northampton. So thank you Leroy for getting that together, Megan, all the, uh, people who were at the egg seminar loading up Hershey Kisses. So everybody had a great time there. And of course, uh, want to shout out to our good friend in North Catasqua, Mayor Bill Mulchany, who was just awarded the Greater Lehigh Valley Chambers Mayor of the Year. A very prestigious award. Uh, Bill's been in his job for sixteen years and he has truly been a good friend of the borough of Northampton. A world-class guy, uh, great family who surprised him with their attendance there. So we had a good time at the meeting, uh, the reception lounge, I should say. Uh, Councilman Glassick was there also, enjoying the festivity, so congratulations to you, uh, Mayor Bill Mulchany from North Catasqua. Happy Easter, everyone. Off to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Solicitors report.
Uh, so I just want to start off, uh, actually with a question for Mr. Hall. Uh, I know the Northampton Borough Fire Truck was assigned to the fire that was going on over at West Easton. Were any of our crew over there as well?
Yeah, they, uh, crew of six, I believe.
Then they deserve a massive congratulations, because that was going on for so long.
They ran a seven-to-seven shift. They ran, they went over seven o'clock in the evening and came back. That's what they said, the truck was back. That, they were, that's what they said, the truck was back in town by ten. But they ran seven to seven.
It just, I mean, they deserve it, uh, every congratulations. It was, it was a huge fire. For those of you that don't know, there was a warehouse fire in West Easton, shut down electricity to over a thousand homes, uh, including Northampton County Courthouse for about two and a half hours. Um, it was incredible, the, the, what people put themselves out for.
We were on standby, we actually took a truck over to Palmer, 'cause they were all out of there. So we took a truck, a move-up assignment to their station the day of. And then the evening, that's when they were over there, uh, uh, over at the site. So they were, they were there, in fact, actually, good, almost twenty-four hours.
Congratulations to them and thank you for that, honestly. Uh, so as was discussed at the beginning of the meeting, Councilwoman Sayuk is, uh, absent today. Uh, we won't get into details, but she did submit a letter of resignation. Uh, that letter was submitted today. Uh, for those of you that don't know, uh, municipal governments are operated, or have to operate through the Sunshine Act. Sunshine Act is what requires the posting of agendas, when do items have to go up. As a general rule of thumb, uh, anything major that's being voted on, uh, by council has to be advertised and put out on the agenda no less than twenty-four hours beforehand. Uh, so because her letter of resignation was put on today, it is unable, in my opinion, unable to be acted on today because it is a rather substantial step that council would be voting on, and I think that would firmly fall within that twenty-four hour requirement. Uh, so that is something that I would expect, assuming nothing changes between now and the April twentieth meeting. Uh, I, that was something I, I assume would appear on that agenda. If anybody has any questions about that, I'll be available after the meeting. Um, other than that, does anybody on council have any questions for me? Very happy Easter to everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Of my report, I want to thank Mr. Sorensis for considering voting in for this zoning position. Uh, we know how hard it is to fill this type of position. And I looked at your resume, it's impressive to me, thank you. And I wanna take this opportunity to, um, thank the Alliance Fire Hall for all that they're doing for the borough. Uh, I had the opportunity to visit last week and they've remodeled the inside, uh, they're now serving food, uh, on weekends. And this leadership that's there now is second to none. They are continually supporting our emergency medical services, our fire and our police departments. So I wanna, uh, say thank you and thank you, Mrs. Millicet, and make sure that, uh, the leadership hears that.
I'll pass that message on.
Thank you, that's all I have. Next, Ms. Armman?
I'm still looking for property or, um, any real estate that anybody knows up for our fire department's training area. So if anybody has any idea of some property that's available, please let me know. Thank you.
Ms. Armman, has anyone contacted Horwith, do you know?
I have.
Have you?
Yes.
Is it positive?
I don't wanna say it in public, she's just looking at.
Okay, thank you.
We can talk about it later.
Okay, thank you.
I don't wanna put him on the spot.
Alright. Mr. Watson?
Um, so, I've reached out to the Northampton High School Guidance Department about reviewing potential future candidates to fill my position. And so, soon we'll be looking at this current sophomores. So then, similarly to how I depended on council's approval, how I did two years, that's what they would fill. So that's what we're looking for and I'm just starting to work through with that. So I'll have more updates on that soon. And I'm also glad to hear about all the discussion about the Northampton Pool. When I was younger, I used to have a pool pass every year and I've, throughout the years, seen how it's kind of gone down and I'm glad we're changing it from a liability to an asset. But some suggestions I would have is to just consider not just improving the pool, but improving the marketing of the pool to our residents, so they know that they have access to, um, these updated facilities. And with that, I just wanna say happy Easter to everyone and hope everyone enjoys their weekend and hopefully, the good weather we're having will stay good. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mr. Glassick?
Well, I'll start with saying, Riley, it's been a pleasure to have you on our council for two years and I'll say it's gonna be huge shoes to fill whoever replaces you, but you are already starting to look for that replacement, which is, again, a statement for you and the job you have done. So, congratulations and best of luck in your future, which I'm sure is very bright. Um, Kelly, thank you so much for the food bank. I can't believe three hundred thousand dollar grant with no strings attached is outstanding in this day and age. Uh, normally, it's hoops and ladders and everything else you gotta jump through, but that is truly a gift to our food bank in Northampton and all that. Uh, so thank you for that. Um, is there, has there ever been any discussion Leroy on the fence, the orange fence, both on the trail, that there's areas blocking as well as down by the canal? About just being fixed instead of being knocked over or laid over? And again, the wet, the winter does destroy that.
I, uh, will bring that to a public works attention.
Okay, thank you. Uh, has there been progress on the light project? Is that almost complete now?
Uh, as far as I can tell, it, uh, just about everywhere I look is, uh, the LED lights are in place.
It's getting a little bit later, ours stays light longer, so I know my trips around town to take a look at the lights getting a little later and later, but when I look down the side streets and I see these, I think it's just a great asset. I think it's a security thing, so again, continuing if you have areas that are out. I know we continually follow up with PPL for streets that are out, lights that are out. Some lights are flickering, they come on for a little bit and they go off, but the only way we know is if you can be eyes, to this is to the community, let us know when things are not working properly. Um, the street work, again, we know, street, uh, there's a lot of pain on the third ward for tenth, eleventh, ninth, twelfth, wherever UGI is working right now, and I know a lot of the borough has, has received that pain prior. And as Mr. Hall stated, the joy comes at the end after it's complete, but the pain is there. And we know that, as Mr. Stone said, so just bear with it, they are working. I know they could do a better job on detours, because I've had people already turn around in my driveway, turning around, 'cause they see the orange signs down farther, so we work through that and try to talk to them and communicate, but they're getting into their busier time. But the equipment that they bring, if you ever noticed it, at seven o'clock in the morning, I can notice it, because it's outside, unloading to go up through the developments and stuff, it is just massive to bring these trucks through. So, kudos to them for all their hard work. Again, to the Alliance Fire Company, again, kudos to the great leadership there. Thank you for all you do from support for our fire departments, our EMSs, but also for the playground, but also a great area to go out there for food and things and be part of our social network in our town. Um, I think people need to understand what we have in this town, from the Alliance, the leader crons, the Ukrainian clubs. I mean, it's just great atmosphere, so that's all I have, end of my report. Unless I should do my budget right now, 'cause we have two months of checks here to go through.
Wait, I get my paper.
Should we do it now or do we wanna do it at the end?
Your choice.
We'll do it at the end, let, let Mr. Watson go.
Thank you. Mr. Lipsansky?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, it's a hell of a lot of pressure to get us to nine o'clock. 'Cause our meetings usually last till then, so I'll, I'll try my best to get it.
Adoration.
Uh, I think there's just several things that we need to kind of either put in the paper or advertise a little bit more strenuous, as when people come in to pay their, uh, taxes and stuff. Just remind them, should they be walking dogs on the canal? Especially now with the increasing work that's being done. It's nice to see dogs walking on the canal. But they need to be under control or on a leash. And the dewdrops need to be cleaned up. Because, uh, it does get to be awful, awful dirty when little kids go running through it and ask their mom and dad, what's this hot dog? So, you know, just, uh, have a reminder that clean up after your dogs, put them on a leash, control them. Make sure that, because now it's coming in that there's a lot more activity. So there's gonna be a lot of, uh, more people there and that the, the, some dogs are very social, some dogs aren't. So if you can just be mindful of your, your puppy's attitude and remind yourself to clean up. The, uh, other thing concerning Canal Street, I don't know if, uh, if it was reported, but on Canal Street between Williams and Seventeenth Street, one of our lights is out. I don't know if someone mysteriously broke it or if, uh, a satellite came down and took it. But it, there is a dark area and I understand why the, the light may have been taken, but it is bright. Remember, lights are to keep people safe. If you don't like the lights coming in your bedroom, there are things that you can do. You can buy black curtains, you can do shades, whatever, or move to another room in your house. And I think that may have been, uh, a situation where someone just got tired of it, went over and whipped it, a rock, and, uh, it, it is expensive and that is a dark section, you can see it. Because it's, it's very, very dull in there. So maybe if you could have the road crew look at that Leroy, and I don't know if, if, uh, PPL comes out and replaces them or how that goes now.
Yeah, I have a, I have a map that identifies the poles by a pole number. And if it's physically missing, uh, I'll, I'll send it in.
Okay. Uh, basically, we have people that are helping the community, getting grants that are phenomenal. And especially no costs. Not only is that a lot of work, it's a lot of aggravation that you're saving the borough. Thank you very much for your time expended and your energy. It's a commendable thing, but to get that type of money for the food bank, that is great. That is wonderful. Uh, we have situations too where we have new people coming in and beginning to see what our town has to offer. And there's, there's nice things that are there, but sometimes they get just a little, a little splashy and we just like to clean them up. So, I think, I yield back the balance of my time to the chair.
Really?
Yeah, it's nine o'clock.
Why would you ask really?
Oh, really, I'm not.
Why would you ask that?
Just hold it for Thursday.
Just shocking.
That's the last, hey, I'm not, I'm not the only one thinking that.
Report for council member, uh, Mr. Brobst.
Okay. My assistant says he has nothing to say.
Oh, I forgot about.
Uh, I only have two things. Uh, first, uh, the guys started on the pool entrance today. What we're planning to do is take the back corner of the refreshment stand, get rid of that little, uh, guardhouse that's up there, and people will come into the gate to that window and that's where they will be admitted. And that way, we don't have to chase people around to the front of the building from the back parking lot. We're going to provide entrance at both areas, but, uh, it'll be much better for the people who park in that parking lot, they'll be able to go in.
Correct.
Um, other than that, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Easter.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I also asked, Mr. Brobst, the Canal Street Park is still closed?
Yes.
It's not open for picnicking and public?
No.
That, and that was the orange fencing?
Well, that, that fence was, uh, an expedient in the very beginning and it, uh, it fell down and we put it back up and it, uh, got blown around and kicked around and, uh, we'll address that.
Thank you. I look for approval to pay the bills?
Can I just ask one question about, um, Victor Odeats summary here? Does anybody know where that request for the pergola kit is going to be put?
The pergola kit, you wanna know, okay. Anybody know where that's gonna go?
Where?
Riverfront Martin.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman? Would we be able to authorize payment for bills that have been received and reflected as being able to be paid?
That confuses me.
Pay the bills.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Stone, question. Mr. Glassick?
Thank you. Um, the auditor, has that went up significantly from last year from Campbell Rep Holding, your sits? I don't recall it being twenty thousand dollars.
Uh, that's for the annual, the annual, you know, last year of what we had, they billed it to. Uh, this one is for the entire year.
'Cause it says fourteen and six, fourteen thousand and six thousand, but I, I still didn't think we spent twenty thousand dollars on, on the audit, but.
Pretty much.
Okay.
See, what did I bunch it?
I, no, no worries, I'm, as long as you're knowing what it's about, I'm good.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't sign it if I, if I didn't like.
I'll call down to you, it's fine. Um, Lehigh Township Police, I'm hoping that Officer Britt didn't get a speeding ticket for five hundred dollars, that was his training? Okay, good.
Oh, that's for, that was for.
Speed timing for.
That was for four officers.
Four officers?
Yeah, a hundred and four apiece.
Okay. Very good then, um, thank you. Again, I'll just comment, why we look at this sewer area, uh, the waste management and the sludge just last month was fifteen thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars. I think that we need to understand that kind of bill, that's why we're looking to keep on putting money back into that sewer and the renovations of that. Um, now we're moving to four, five unposted checks and things. Um, Duffy Norton and Decanter for nine thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars, number two item on page one.
Oh, that's, that was repaired to the one Decanter Basin at the sewer plant.
You can add that to fifteen thousand. Um, the gas grill for fi- four hundred seventy-seven dollars. Where's the gas grill for? It didn't seem it, unless the mayor dropped it off at his house.
Uh, no, I have a new one, but, okay. Police Department.
Where is it?
Police Department.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Where are we?
It's on the page one in the.
Page one, halfway down.
Brent Benenhauer.
Um.
Well, that was bought out of the police equipment fund.
Okay.
That's for the, uh, yep.
The twenty-second, when we have that.
No, that's.
Oh, the thing that's down the canal, okay. Alright. And actually, that was a short list, so that's all I had. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
In May, I would like just to, well, so council, for a minute, I have Officer Perry returning to the Kena.
Okay, thank you.
If you could just come in, just so you guys can see him.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
If you wanna have him sit in here the whole meeting.
Don't get him jumpy.
Now wait, do we finish out this?
Yeah, if you wanna call for a, a boat.
Say hello to Chico?
Chico.
Aww. Bring him up here so I can get a picture, please.
And my compliments to Officer Perry for adopting the position and, uh, taking care of Chico as he has been.
What kind of puppy is Chico?
They're getting to, uh, really enjoy each other's company.
How old is he? Forty-three in July, trying to be a good dog.
Good dog.
Officer.
What kind?
Officer, picture for the press.
What kind of dog?
So, Belgian Malinois.
Oh, okay. Sweet. Bye, Chico.
So thank you, Officer Perry.
Thank you.
Oh, no, don't take a point with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much. Okay, great. Now we need a vote to pay the bills, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion adjourned.
Made by Mr. Hall?
Second.
By Ms. Armman? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, let's go home.